It's kind of silly to announce that you can watch it on Channel 22. If you're not watching, then you don't know that I said that.
Honestly, I didn't know what the channel was until you said it, so.
What does that mean, I'm who?
I think it means you're just SRL.
Oh, here you go. Good man. What'd you do?
Oh. Do you know you have two different shoes on?
Did that horse step on your foot again?
Skiing accident, probably. What'd you do?
Oh, we just missed a step.
Pardon me?
It's seven and you have a form.
No, I don't do something.
No ice, can't live it on ice or snow or anything.
And here it comes. Greetings. All right, it's seven o'clock, everybody. Welcome to the Lincolnville Planning Board. It is Wednesday, January 12th, 2022, 7:00. I'm Elizabeth Udi. And on the board tonight, present are Bill Norfleet, Dick Vermulon, that guy, Jay Foster, and myself. So far absent are Scott Harrison,
Janice.
Janice Kay and Sandy Delano. Also present, Craterio and Nancy Weezer. Where to? So we have three things on the agenda tonight. And unless any, oh, may we,
The levy.
The two of us. May we approve Bill and Jay to vote this evening? All in favor?
There's not even a form.
Well, you are now, so you guys can vote now. Okay. Guess we're going to start. I thought maybe Sandy might show up. I'm trying to go slow, but that's okay. All right, so we're going to start with the temples. And my next door neighbor here, Jay, is going to help guide me. We discussed last time you were here, the submission requirements.
Right.
And gone through the paperwork. It looks like everything's in order. So I am assuming, do we have to go through the submission requirements again, or go straight into you? 13, 14, 11, 12, and 13.
As I understand it, for the record, this is not an approved commercial site.
Correct.
I keep seeing the word grandfathered, but I'm not quite sure what that means, but this is not an approved site. So the request in the application is for approval of a commercial site?
Yes, and then, and then for amendment to be added to that application.
So this is, this is a meeting to find the application complete?
Yes. And the fee has been paid.
Okay. So, application. And we start with 10.2. We had agreed last time on what would be necessary in the submission packet, which I assume is what you're referring to as the application. We A, so I'm sorry, I got thrown off of something you said.
As I understand it, this is an application for an approved commercial site under 2.1D, which is the establishment of a new non-residential use. Or is it a conversion of an existing building and all of its parts?
It's E.
It's what?
It was E.
D, okay.
No, a conversion of an existing non-residential use and all of parts to another non-residential.
Okay, so it's either. Being reviewed under 2.1E.
Okay. So now, may I move on to, what, submissions, which I Last time we were here, we decided which submissions we would expect of them. Now, do I need to go through these one by one now? Or do we, oh, you're saying that we, see, I'm confused about.
Well, Frank has classified it as a
Minor.
Minor, okay. So it's classified as a minor. So now under the pre-application with no requests, we have a pre-application.
That's the way I saw it.
So that pre-application is done and on the record. So we're looking for application submissions and review procedures.
And I think you talked about the only submissions that they needed to go from.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And what we discussed at the pre-app was the items that we were going to waive.
And so we can identify those with what they put together in their application.
Right.
And I had down first 10.3F, location and dimensions. I don't know if I need to go through these individually, that's my question.
Well, you don't have that many, do you?
No. Um. 10.3 is on the onsite plan, is on the site plan. J, the location of the nearest fire hydrant, dry hydrant, also included. If we go through these standards, and that's a no.
No, we're doing, we're doing, we're finding the applications submitted to the board complete.
Okay.
Once it's complete, we say it's complete, now we can start the review. That can be done at this meeting. I would suggest that it not be because we've got other applications to deal with. So they should come back for review under the standards for approval of the commercial site plan.
I'm, I understand. I also feel that we implied to both parties present last time that we would do all of the above in the one evening.
Yep, but we can do that. And I don't mind ceding, like going after them, if that would streamline the process.
Are they going through the same?
They're going through the very same thing you are.
Well, they're doing an amendment to an approved plan.
True.
We're doing a complete plan for him.
And
So I want to run through what is argued identified as submissions, I won't take on.
Okay. So the 10.3F, the J was location of nearest fire hydrant, they included Frocock and the nearby fire station. K, the location. Front view dimensions, lighting of existing and proposed signs were included. A point of protocol, I suppose, is do I repeat each of these again in 30 minutes? So, included, it's posted on the barn, each of the four doors has a sconce.
We're doing submission requirements, right?
Yes.
You started at 10.2.
10.2, we had decided A, C, E, G, and H were what was required. And A was the property owner's name and address, it is included. C, name and addresses of all property owners within 500 feet was included. E, sketch map showing general location of the site, included. G, the tax map, lot number of the parcel, et cetera, was included. And H, copy of the deed to the property and option to purchase the property and other documentation. Yes, and we did have in the packet this time the deed as well as who anchor and thistle are, and the corporate papers to show that you are the
And that establishes standard?
Correct.
Means he owns the property, so he can come here and request an application.
Correct.
Sounds good.
And then we moved on to 10.3. Where did I go? How did I lose my 10.3? Oh, okay. So in 10.3, we had decided on F, J, K, L. L is the location and dimensions of existing easement and copies of existing covenants and deed restrictions. We included the Lincolnville Sewer District map for which there is a not a right-of-way, an easement.
Right.
Okay. And then 10.4?
There is no development.
There is no development. See submitted packet, not a proposed development. 10.4A was district classifications, let's see. No.
So there were no requests for waivers from the applicant. And the board has authorized waiver of the items that we have as in the record. So we have everything we need.
Great. Approval block was on one of the sheets, they added it.
Yes, it is.
So if that is the complete application, then now can we move to move on for approval and review?
Yep.
So I would need a motion to that effect?
I move that the applicant's applications to the board is complete, that the board can advance to review of the application.
Everyone in favor? Thank you. So, the application, we start with section 11, subsection 11, standards and criteria. On 11.1, utilization of site, A and B. It's an existing building on the site. And beyond that, we say that it is being used leased, rented, for commercial purpose. And part of it, the house, is going to remain a house.
Right.
Is the home being used? That's just me curious.
The house property? No, I'm currently like painting and redoing the floor and stuff.
You don't foresee it to ever become a commercial endeavor? Because now would be the time.
That's all right, you decide you want to come back to the amendment.
Then it would be an amendment.
Be a minor amendment, you don't have to make a decision now.
Okay, can, we'll leave it at now.
Okay. So 11.1 was the utilization of site. Obviously, nothing changes from what you've had going on. We're not worried about steep slopes, floodplains, wildlife habitats, et cetera. 11.2, traffic access and parking. You have an existing plan with parking access described in the submissions with drawings.
Right, it's got six parking lots.
No changes or construction is proposed, are proposed. 11.3, stormwater management. There's no new construction or development proposed. 11.3, stormwater management. 11.4, erosion control. It is an existing site, no further development or construction proposed. 11.5, water supply provisions. Existing site, water supply adequate.
Yeah.
You have a well.
Yep.
The demand is going to be far less than the supply or previous use.
Yes.
And no new development that requires review of adequacy. 11.6, sewage and wastewater disposal. You have the Lincolnville Sewer District.
Correct.
Oh, that's an interesting point. This may be one of the first ones we've ever done with a new sewer system. We've got to be aware of that now.
And let's see, wastewater, okay. 11.7, utilities, it's an existing building, the utilities serve as is.
Correct.
See submission requirements for description. No new construction proposed or new utilities required.
Just out of curiosity, if I, I'm going to entertain, like look into potentially putting in solar panels, would that be
No problem.
Just through Frank?
It did not require a permit for solar panels for residential use right now.
Okay.
I don't think that would be a change to commercial state. To tell us that if it was a commercial solar panel farm, you would need to go for the approval. But he's adding a single solar panel on. It's not, it's not for a farm, it's not for commercial purposes. It's just for his updated utilities.
Like adding solar panels to the roof for hot water. It's like adding solar panels to the roof for hot water.
Right.
Yeah.
Same thing.
Exactly.
Good question.
Yep, thank you.
Get on a compacting.
You guys are nice folk.
11.8, natural features, no new construction is proposed, so the natural vegetation will remain.
Correct.
Um, as is, I suppose. 11.9, groundwater protection. Proposed use will not impact quality or quantity of the groundwater availability at this time.
Correct.
11.10, where did that go? Pathous and special or radioactive materials.
Absolutely not.
You're sure?
Like, full disclaimer, right? It used to be a dental office. And I'm pretty sure, although I did not use them personally as my dentist, I'm guessing they had x-ray equipment in there. But I can't imagine that it's a site of
It's all electronic.
Yeah, it's all encapsulated in what, I don't know.
So I'm going to say none associated with proposed or present use as an administrative office. 11.11, shoreland relationship, none. 11.12, solid waste management. I think you stated before that you'll be, or the tenant will be taking
Yeah, correct.
Trash to the transfer station.
Yep.
11.13, historic and archaeological resources. None, right? And 11.14, floodplain management? Is it not a floodplain, or is it?
No.
Okay, not a floodplain. 11.15, general fire protection provisions. You stated in your paperwork, I know it was in here. Pardon me?
In reference to the fire hydrant?
Right.
Of the interior fire protection.
Oh, yeah, I have commercially installed and inspected fire extinguishers. I believe I have three of them. And they're, they're also required by my insurance.
Okay.
We also have smoke detectors encumbered and outside, and they're hardwired into the house.
Correct.
To the structure.
The office as well, okay.
That's a, that's a temple proposal.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, thank you, that's what I was looking for, you're right. Under H, under his submissions. 10.4H. Also, and Frank might be able to help me with this, I know that as of January 1st, the fire marshal sent out, the state fire marshal sent out new requirements for detectors for flammable gas, propane, natural gas, and kerosene, that sort of thing. And that, it's required in commercial buildings. So is that something that we will have to address, or just make, make sure you know about it?
We're approving that as is.
As is, okay.
So it does not pertain to what new current laws are out.
Okay. And because it's not in our ordinance, it's really between he and the fire marshal. Him and the fire marshal.
If he was building something new, then he'd have to put in all the different safety measures that before we could even give an approval. But this is something that whatever it is sitting there today is what we're looking at. Not something that he has to update
Right.
to make his grandfathered commercial site plan up to, up to standard.
Okay. I guess too, I had a question again for Frank. Do, does the fire marshal send out everybody who has a commercial endeavor, the letter?
Probably.
Did you get one?
Not yet, but we are aware of it.
Okay. And then we go on to section 12, good neighbor standards.
I'm going to make a recommendation.
Yes, please.
I've never been a big fan of going to each individual item in the standards, voting on it, on a motion. But I think it's a good idea if we take the sections of the standards. We have section 11, 12, and 13.
Section 12, you do want to vote on each, every one of these.
Every one of them, okay.
Yeah, because when you get all done, if you're voting on each one of these individually, and none of these have a majority, but it's a negative, then by default, they've been approved.
Okay. So I would make a motion if the board has reviewed and found facts associated with the standards of section 11, and that we approve the applications meeting the standards of section 11, standards and criteria.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
And all in favor, please? Thank you. Section 11, approved. Section 12, good neighbor standards. 12.1 is exterior lighting. You had mentioned the sconces and the light on the barn.
Mm-hmm.
And existing lighting to be used, described in submissions. Each of the four exit doors has a sconce in the barn.
Right.
And you're aware that all lighting needs to be off between 11 and 6?
Yes.
Okay.
There are, in, in, let's see. I do want to point out, though, on the front of the building, on the office side, I guess if you're staring at, I marked, I used triangles to mark where the lights are.
Mm-hmm.
One of those triangles represents the peak of the roof. And there's a not a spotlight, but like a floodlight.
Mm-hmm.
It's controlled by a switch and not a timer, and it's usually just off.
Okay.
But I do want to say that, that is another one that's there that is not a sconce and it's not near the door.
Okay.
But it is present.
And will be off at night between 11 and 6?
Yes.
Okay. 12.2, oh, now, so you think we should vote on each of these individually? Okay, so 12.1, exterior lighting.
I make a motion, we approve exterior lighting.
And all in favor? Thank you. 12.2 is buffering. It's an existing structure inside with no new development. I'm assuming this will be as is?
Yes.
He's thinking.
It's under 1.
It's under 1.
I'm going to buffer it on room 1.
Yep.
There's no property behind you. There's no effect on either side of you, because I forget what's on either side.
Well, there's residential buildings, there's a driveway on one side, and then like a wooded lot with a driveway through it.
So it's a transition of one type to use another type of use of screening or mechanical equipment. There's none of that involved, so
So we need a motion on 12.2 on buffering, that we accept?
Given the facts presented in the application, I think that 12.2 buffering is, the standard has been met because no buffering is really required.
And a second?
Sure.
And all in favor of approving 12.2? 12.3, noise. There should be no undue noise with this use. Any future construction would need to be quiet.
Correct. No more screaming.
I was going to say, that's nothing of screaming.
And let's see, the other part of noise is any kind of construction in the future needs to be quiet between 9 and 7, and on Sundays. But you're not doing anything major right now that makes noise, okay. So are we going to approve 12.3? No undue noise associated with this use?
Yes, we are.
Check her.
All in favor, please? Thank you. 12.4, storage of materials. Exposed non-residential storage areas, dumpsters, exposed machinery, and areas used for storage or collection of discarded automobiles, et cetera, must have sufficient setbacks and screening, such as stockade fence or dense evergreen hedge. I don't know why this doesn't go with buffering, but because it's specific to materials.
I'm not storing materials on that side.
Okay.
I guess the question, is you going to buffer your dumpster?
There's no dumpster.
That's a simple answer.
So may we approve 12.4? As having met the standards?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
Well, the fact is, no noise is going to be developed from the site because of the use.
Do we have to have seconded?
Dick, seconded. Didn't he?
I have him as making the motion.
Oh, okay. Bill can second, thank you. So 12 is complete. Section 13, design standards.
No design.
There's no
There's no design because there's no new development.
Correct.
There's no proposed landscape thing. There's no proposed change to the parking lot for buffers. There's no change to the site.
No canopy or drive-through, no view protection to worry about, or ridgeline protection, no hillside development or shoreline development.
So?
The only thing would be business signs, and I have here to see, to see the CEO, because that's something you're already
That wouldn't matter because it's there.
Right.
So, no, it's only if they're going to change the sign, which is what's said always.
Exactly. Oh, I see. So section 13, are we satisfied that it
Yes.
Yes, we are.
We're almost saying that section 13 is not applicable because of the situation.
Correct.
I think that's where grandfathering quote-unquote may come in, is that this is an existing site, operated as a site. The only thing that's changed is that the use of the site. We couldn't tell them to take this building and move it somewhere else, or take it down and build a new one. So really, it's not applicable to this application of what section 13 is asking us to do.
So we can leave it at all of section 13 that's not applicable?
I would say that it needs the standards of section 13, just to be sure.
Okay, so all who agree, thank you.
I guess that was a motion.
You made the motion.
You can have Bill.
Pick anybody you want.
And Jay, are you agreeing to that?
Yes, he did.
Okay.
So this means
Means we need a motion.
We need a motion to, hold on. I'm cheating.
That's good.
Oh wait, now this one's different. Oh wait, that is just totally different, never mind. So I need a motion to approve the commercial site plan for, um
Anchor and thistle?
Anchor and thistle, I like it. And map 16, lot 92, 3561 Atlantic Highway for the temples. To use part of that property as a commercial endeavor right now as administrative office.
Well, and the application declared the use of the site is going to be for administrative
Mm-hmm, administrative offices.
For school district unit 969. So the, the approval of the commercial site plan will approve the use of that site for offices for school administrative district 69. So any change of use of that would be an amendment to this approved plan.
In the future, yep. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And all in favor? You're done.
Thank you, maybe sweat that one out.
That's okay, me too.
If you want to wait a minute, the planning board's going to sign the five lines.
Okay.
You need two copies.
I only have one copy in mind.
I have one.
Oh, yeah, actually, I think I might have two, but that was before they put lines on.
And then you want to sign the application in the back, what it calls, just for the clerk to the the chair from the planning board. I can sacrifice mine if we need more people there. You need what? To pick this apart, we can just, you need to start with it. The chair has to start on the top.
Absolutely.
All right.
The trouble with math.
There you go.
I know, we still don't have the story on that either.
I don't think you've got to get it.
He missed a step.
Huh?
He missed a step.
Oh.
That's a story anyway.
Dick?
And then you can sign this one here, and I'll use this to put the five.
Do you have to date this thing, or no?
Where am I?
You're right. There.
Oh, thank you.
Do you have to date this thing?
I have to date to be on hip.
On the bottom, I can do that.
Frank, I have an aside question. So with the, with the sign, will it be cleared to put up the signage now that it's been approved? Or does the school district need to go to zoning to get permission?
I've got the application. Now that I can put down what it's about,
Okay.
I can approve it when submitted.
Okay. Great.
And I don't remember if there was a $15 check submitted, so that, that will be the last thing.
Okay.
So give me a call tomorrow. And then I can have it.
Perfect.
That, ready. It probably can give me a verbal, if I have everything I need on the application.
Okay.
There won't be any hurdles.
Yeah, they'll be thrilled.
Signs are pretty simple, but yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does the sign lit?
What?
He asked if the sign was drawn, I mean lit.
Just want to make sure the sign lights over to the oncoming traffic.
Oh, oh, oh.
He said it's not lit, so.
So the, the stand
Well, actually, technically, like it doesn't have any lights that direct towards it, but the light that's on the peak that I described earlier, the floodlight, or I don't know if that's the right description of that type, but like, it's underneath, the sign would be underneath that. But it's, I think the intention of that light is to light up the parking lot, maybe? You know? You know? But.
This is.
They, I have, my current tenants aren't even using.
Hang on, hang on to that.
So the old sign stand? Isn't it still up?
I don't even think they're gonna use that.
No, they're gonna put up, they're gonna put a new sign.
On the bar?
On the side of the bar.
So the, the two posts are gonna just remain where they are?
There's only one post from that, as far as I know, it's just gonna stay under that. Eventually I'll take it down.
Okay. You're good.
License.
Excellent. I'm waiting for the confetti to drop.
This, this, a lot of Americans got talent. They, they took that away from us.
Your wife was worried when she was here last week, right, or last night? She was.
No doubt. I appreciate all of you, thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck.
You did a great job.
Yeah.
Bye-bye.
Bye now. And you, so you got, got that so warmed up for Breyer?
Okay. Ready? Yep.
And before they start, I have the list of the butters that have verified them. And they have been sent out notified. I have a letter here from David Allen, the D O T engineer, that says that the parking, the, uh, the traffic impact is none.
Okay, so we are now reviewing Lincolnville General Store map seven, lot seventy-seven, Breyer Lyons acting as representative and owner.
And this is the approved application right here, if we have anything we need to refer to.
This is the conversion of an existing, let's see, this is an amendment to an existing approved site plan. To, as a change of use for a residential area of the site to be now part of your commercial endeavor.
Correct.
That's it.
In whole or in part, okay then. The amendment to the existing commercial site plan, but only half the property was reviewed previously as commercial, and that was just the downstairs.
Correct.
Okay. The, let's see, we have in the packet, everything I wanted. Frank was on it. And thank you, Breyer, for finishing that up. And part of what they included is pumpkin patch, you are a pumpkin patch. And the tax map, the Ford drawings, um, construction permit from public safety. And on general information, ten point two, we had decided at the last meeting. On A. Um, sorry, didn't write them down. Did we do A?
That's not, that, that doesn't say.
No. The names and addresses of all owners is in, a sketch match of how the traffic flows, which was E. And the doors and signs and design of the upstairs included. We decided we needed G, which is the map five lot, let's see, existing and improved. G is. Why I didn't just write them all down, G, the tax map and lot number. So we have that, we have a copy of the deed, which was H. On ten point three, we discussed needing F. Need to know the traffic flow of the existing parking, loading areas, walkways, or immediate, uh, immediate or adjacent to the site. We have that, including the letter from D O T that Frank has. J is the need to know the location of the nearest fire hydrant, dry hydrant, other water supply and fire protection. What did we decide on that? Did I see something in the paperwork?
You asked for like whatever the closest water body was that we expected the fire department would use, which was Norton's Pond.
Okay.
There's a creek next to the store, but we weren't sure that that was.
Adequate.
Yeah, adequate.
Yeah, the pond would be more like.
And L, um, needed to know the location dimensions of existing easements, copies of existing covenants or deed restrictions. And I assume you had put N A on there, which.
There are none.
There are none, so that, which, I accept that, thank you. So. Does everyone feel like we, the submission requirements we decided on last time have been met?
The request that we made. For submission on the application or for us to find it complete have been submitted. The items that the board waived is not required because it's an amendment to pre-existing commercial site are listed in the record. So I would say that the requested information the board needs to review the application has been presented. And I would find the application complete.
A second? All in favor? Thank you. So, now do, here we go again, we move on.
Yeah.
Through eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Sounds very simple.
So, section eleven, eleven point one, utilization of site. We have that, existing building, existing business. And the change you're making is really something that'll be approved, as far as serving the liquor, it's not up to us. But, I was serving the beer and wine. Sorry. It is only up to us to approve the change of use.
Correct.
Eleven point two, traffic access and parking, um, an existing plan and parking access and a site map was included in the materials. Eleven point three, stormwater management, no new construction or development proposed. Eleven point four, erosion control, again, existing site, no further development. Eleven point five, water supply provisions. Uh, the existing site, you have a well, I assume?
Yes.
And a septic system?
Yes.
Uh, demand should not be greatly affected on your septic. Oh, and water supply, okay. And on septic. I have existing structure and use, septic age and location, I assume is all good. And that's the Frank department.
It was a new system when the business opened though.
New system when the business opened and that was, how many years ago?
Four years ago.
Four years. Utilities, existing building and utilities will continue to serve, anything new?
No.
Uh, no new construction proposed that would be affected by existing utilities or requirements were new. Eleven point eight, natural features. No new construction proposed, all the natural features and vegetation remain as is. Eleven point nine, groundwater protection, proposed use will not impact the quality or quantity of your groundwater. Eleven point ten, hazardous and special radioactive materials, nothing new, little extra wine and beer.
That's about all.
Yep. Shoreland relationship, none?
None.
Eleven point twelve, solid waste management. What do you do now, you have a dumpster?
Yep.
Are there any requirements for the holder of a liquor license to dispose of things that are coming out of a licensed liquor establishment? To handle the materials that come out of the building? In other words, you have to take special precautions because there might be half-full liquor bottles or something like that? Or is there any requirement to handle?
I don't believe so.
Solid waste differently?
I think we are responsible for whatever's left at the end of the day. Yep.
But not personally.
No, that's, no.
Um, you will have an increased amount of redeemables.
We can donate all that to the school.
Yay, thank you. Uh, eleven point three, historic and archaeological resources, none?
No.
Other than the building itself, I suppose. Eleven point fourteen, floodplain management. None there. And eleven fifteen, your general fire protection provisions, I believe you did have on your thing where your. Extinguishers are.
Yes.
And that, this beats all the commercial multifamily residential building requirements?
Yes.
Requires, reach requirements that occur in state life safety code?
And you have already got a permit from the fire marshal?
Correct.
To make the changes?
Mm-hmm.
Let's see, whether those structures are placed around the structures that are being maintained, but it's not, fire department personnel, you get ready access to. You've established the fire department has no problem gaining access to anywhere they wanna go, so. Uh, and during construction of vehicles, access to all structures by fire department vehicles, so whatever construction you have done shouldn't obstruct the ability of the fire department to gain access.
Certainly not, we haven't done any construction.
But what you will do upstairs, you don't want that debris.
That's correct.
In the way of. Okay, that takes care of eleven, does anyone want to make a motion on eleven? Subsection eleven?
I would make a motion that the application. For an amendment to a previously approved commercial site plan. Has met the standards of section eleven that the board has deemed applicable to the amendment request.
A second, please? Dick? And all in favor? Thank you. Move on to twelve, exterior lighting. Adequate exterior to provide for safe use during nighttime and seasonal dark hours. No changes to what you have existing, and you did include diagrams. So there, um, as Jay suggested, we need to vote on each of these individually, or is Frank? Second?
Yes.
So exterior lighting.
Did I hear no change?
No.
No change, diagram included demonstrates the existing lighting around the store and the parking area across the street.
Um, well, if there's no change, it's all approved.
Okay. So, twelve point two buffering, no change?
Then it's approved.
No new development? And twelve point three?
That could be an issue.
No, because she's only allowing two drinks.
Okay, so you're saying that nobody's gonna get noisy because they've only had two drinks?
Not anymore noisy than they get before.
That's downstairs, remember that there are two different spaces. So the first application is for the main part of the store. And that would be two servings of beer or wine in the back at the counter, once we put up that new wall.
Well, you have to understand the intent of this standard is to assure the general population of the town. That as a result of this amendment to this approved plan, there isn't gonna be a lot of noise being made by.
Oh.
People who are attending.
Disturbance.
Your establishment. There is something, you control the noise that's coming from the building.
Yes.
And you're not proposing anything outside the building, so I don't see that as causing a problem.
Okay.
It's just that the noise from a neighbor's complaint might come from the fact you've got more people there now, only having two drinks at a time. It might get a little crowded, so. The intent of the noise, uh, control noise levels such they will not create a nuisance for neighboring properties.
We will not create a nuisance for neighboring properties.
And special events, you go to the select board and ask for special event permit, so.
So that's twelve.
That's twelve.
I would say because of the, uh, applicant's response to the question, what are they gonna do about noise? That the, uh, requirements are good enough for section twelve, good neighbor standards.
Second? And all in favor? Thank you. And thirteen, design standards, nothing changes. The interior designs, uh, which she has included.
There's no change, there's no desire to change inside. She brings tables.
Bringing some tables and chairs, yeah.
Well, there's that little new wall.
Yeah.
That's on the main floor, yep.
And it still would not affect any thirteen anyway.
Looks like triple.
Pardon me?
You know.
So in that case, do we do the same thing, that design standards, um, are not met so much as they're not changing? Correct?
Correct.
And so do I have a motion to that effect?
Yes.
And a second, please?
I'll do everything.
All in favor of approving section thirteen as satisfied?
Have you done thirteen or just?
That was thirteen, design standards.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
So, I'd like to bring up a point.
Yes, please.
I didn't think we were through it yet. Um, parking lot placement. Um, the parking lots as they exist have been approved under the approved commercial site plan. What changes now is the pedestrian activity, which was really covered in section twelve that we kinda went over. But do we proceed with the parking that's across the street? Will the activity now gonna go on to the building and increase the traffic across the road? For I know there's been a situation about a crosswalk and all that kinda stuff.
I mean, we expect that it will be equal to what happens in the summer, or less.
Okay, that's a good point. So the activity for the parking lot across the street is expected to increase, but no more than the volume that's normally experienced in the summertime when you're doing full blast and you've got people.
Well, in, in reality, this is out of the town's control. And this is why having the engineer.
From D O T.
Is gonna be any increase in traffic. Now, the only way you would get a, a light there would be if the state said the traffic of pedestrians is sufficient enough and warrants a lot. So this would be part of what.
Or an official crosswalk.
Takes into consideration when he looked at what's the new traffic.
Okay, I mean, there's nothing we can do about the parking lot placement. But the change of use might cause a, the change in the flow of pedestrians across from that parking lot to this one.
Mm-hmm.
But no more that is normally experienced in the summertime activity when the stores is operating without this amendment to it.
I agree with that.
That's good.
So we need to vote that thirteen is, um, the standards have been met. No canopies, no view protection, no ridge line protection, hillside development or shoreline development. Site considerations, no new development or construction site, so. We have a second?
Something changes on the site, right?
Pardon me?
Something changes on the site.
No. So all in favor of thirteen is good?
Let's make a motion.
Yes.
Dick made the motion.
I think.
Who's seconding?
Seconded it, but then.
Okay, now we're all voting.
What do you need to vote?
No.
Thank you. And. The rest we don't deal with, the post-approval activities.
No.
So all we do is sign.
The company is voted approved.
Oh, and the vote to approve in general, and that one, oh wait, Dick.
This is it?
Maybe, that one might work. You know, the selectmen do that, so I don't know why we can't.
I move that the board approve the amendment to the commercial site plan for the store. I don't know what the cross that was, uh, for the store, as change of use to convert to. A resident.
Convert the residential area?
Can you write better than that?
No.
You wrote that?
I rushed through it.
What is that word?
We need a signature.
Commercial site plan for the Lincolnville Central Store. As it, it's a general store, not central. Uh, as a change of use to convert a portion of the residential second floor to include the store. With the store and the, um, restaurant for the purpose of expanding the serving area.
What'd you do, write down a motion?
I did, they do it in the selectman board meetings, why can't I?
I'll say.
Did we see the liquor license?
Pardon me?
Did we see the liquor license?
No.
We don't have a liquor license yet, but that is, the select board has passed us as of Monday night. Once they hand me their signatures, then I will, the liquor inspector's coming down this week.
Okay, so you do have.
So, have, are you changing it to a liquor license over a beer and wine?
It's the same, it's only beer and wine, but it's.
Okay.
Yeah, considered a liquor license.
So you approve with a contingency?
The actual vote of the select board, because I was here.
Mm-hmm.
Was that they voted to approve the liquor license application pending planning board approval. I don't think that was necessary, but that's the way the select board ordered it.
So we can hardly. Approve it pending on the selectmen's.
No.
Approval. So we have to go with the motion, does anyone second it?
I'll second it.
And does anyone in favor?
No, you, you made the.
I don't.
The motion, I need to second it for this. Oh, people.
I'll second it and we're all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
We're gonna give you a copy of it.
Okay. Uh, these are the same ones?
No, it's just, it's just the first floor, second floor.
Okay, and do you want me to sign the two I have as well, or just these?
Sign the application?
Okay.
Sign those. Uh, you have any?
I can't get them, I can't get them apart, I think they're the two wrong. Can't look at them.
So you're gonna put the contingency on?
We don't have a contingency.
Are you talking?
The selectmen do.
Their, their vote was contingent on our approval.
Right.
And should our appro, our approval be?
But our appro, our pro.
We can't both contingent on the other.
No.
That makes no sense.
Let me finish.
Go ahead.
Can, should, should our approval be a contingent on liquor license being secured?
I don't believe so, because we're here to amend the change of use, not approve.
There's nothing in the order that says we approve a change of use to a liquor using facility pending the approval of a liquor license issuance. There's nothing in here that says that, so we're concerned with the site. What they do on the site that require it permitting is their responsibility.
But she may change her mind and not want red liquor. But she might still want to serve food upstairs, so she wouldn't have to come back for amendment.
Yeah, well, you come back for amendment.
Does that?
I need to hold the site. And you sign the application?
This one?
Yes.
You have anything?
There are several separate pages to.
Yep.
A little dry.
I didn't notice.
So Briar will give you a set of the signs, so that's your proof that you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we heard twice in a week, that's enough.
That's fine, we won't give you that for a while, no problem.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, good luck!
The signatures are here.
Oh no, you need to give the voice.
You're kind of stealing stuff from us there, Frank, you know?
Choose the application.
Thank you.
Oh, Dee went through that when we were building the package.
The fingers!
Yeah, it was hard.
Do you want a copy of this from the state fire marshal?
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, Frank might come bother with a look for that.
Yeah, we're, you know, waiting to do it.
You get the right pieces of the paper that they have.
There you go.
Awesome, thank you so much. You're all in favor.
Thank you. You going to cut us off after two drinks?
No.
Okay.
My neighbor wants to know if, um, French dips are a regular thing.
Oh, they were, that when Derek was part of the team, but he moved to George's, his parents, so we have not had them in many more.
Okay. She came by every day for a week looking for them, I said, well?
We'll have to bring her back.
Rover's up for suggestions.
Thank you, goodnight. Okay, now we have. Are you Mr. Ingram?
Mark.
Mark. This is an application for renovation in addition to a non-conforming shoreline camp, ninety-two Norton Pond, map three, lot ninety-seven. And Mark is with, are you with Dervis Designs?
No, he's, he's just a mayor. Eric is unable to attend tonight, he asked me to come to his place. How's my doing? Since I did the original site plan and I'm familiar with the three, I was standing in his place.
He broke it.
Yeah, he broke it, but.
I thought that was the guy that was supposed to be here two weeks ago.
I'm sorry, that's the other guy.
Thank you. It was like two and one.
It was because of, because of the old.
Ah, okay. Um, the owners are the Diaz Cavedos of Camden, who purchased it in twenty twenty-one. Let's see, looping, the address is okay, proposal coverage, alright. I do have warranty deed, I have a letter, uh, from the Cavedos, the Diaz Cavedos, um...
Can I make a clarification?
Yes.
We have a land use application on the property of ninety-two Norton Pond Road, map three lot ninety-seven. The applicant's name is Eric Dervas.
Yes.
He's not here.
He's Dervas Designs.
Property owner's name is Nicole Alvaro de Cavedo Ramos.
Uh, it's the Diaz Cavedos.
And you are?
He is representing the owners.
Okay.
And we have a letter, and I believe Mark's name is on it, yes.
Do we have a letter?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
I was just telling you, all the stuff in the packet.
So he's, he has standing to be a protocol?
Yes, he does. We hereby authorize Mark, the surveyor, to be here. Also in the packet, I have the tax map, a copy of the deed, and all this other good stuff.
Because this is a different kind of.
Pardon me?
This is different than a commercial site plan.
Oh, yes. And from what I could tell, all I did, well, so it's non-conformance, non-conforming on shoreline. The maximum total footprint of the principal structure, that is something, the math is done by Frank, so you guys can see on your plat what has been proposed. And Mark, do you have a presentation? Did you want to?
Not really. Um, basically, I, just a quick overview is that the, it's a non-conforming, uh, structure in the shoreline zone, which brings us to the board. And the, uh, if you look at site image expansion calculations, C dash one, you can see that the, sort of the light brown shaded area is the proposed addition, which includes a bedroom and, uh, a bathroom and an entryway, which totals less than a thousand square feet as required by the ordinance. The other calculations talk about, uh, lot coverage, and we're at nineteen percent for the twenty percent allowable, which includes the addition and a reduction of the gravelled spaces that are currently existing. And there's no new improvements, uh, to be within twenty-five feet of the shore, shoreline. So basically, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
You're removing only four trees.
Yes.
The one's right smack in the bedroom. And removing two pieces of ledge.
Yes.
Is that through your blasting?
No, I think they're going to use a rammer. Looks like Jake Barber's doing earthwork. So there will be no blasting.
And Frank, on the, so the existing deck and cottage are remaining.
Yes.
The cottage is going to get a roof and screening. Does that affect the, the calculations and volume, et cetera?
No.
Okay.
We don't, we don't want the volume anymore of the square footage.
Great. And your height is not changing, you're staying at the eighteen point one maximum?
Yes, the, the ridge will be, uh, the new addition will be equal to the ridge of the existing cottage.
So do we have questions or points to be made by the board? This is not a demolition, it's not moving and existing or, um, or starting fresh?
And, uh, not increasing bedrooms.
Uh, just a, just a clarification, you just asked Frank about the deck. Uh, they said it's going to add a roof and screening.
Mm-hmm.
Does that encompass enclosure? Does that not add square footage, or?
Is it what?
He's asking if that adds square footage or if he's.
By putting a roof on and screening.
The new rule of twenty fifteen is if I have an existing deck, it can automatically make that volume.
Make it what?
Volume. The days are gone when we calculate volume.
Okay, so the square footage existed, even though it's being changed, it's still the same square footage?
Same square footage, and so they could take that deck, and if this building happened to be thirty feet tall, they could make that deck volume up to the thirty feet tall.
How long has the square footage didn't change?
Square footage, yeah. But they made it, it just, always may have a volume, but never like a volume.
I guess it's a move point, an improvement being made to the existing building closer to, not, not, and not any closer to the water.
Correct.
So they're putting a screen and a roof on a deck that already exists, so nothing's happening any closer to the water.
That's right.
And not of that, you're not doing fifty percent of the value or rebuilding fifty percent of values, there's no consideration of moving it back.
So the, the actual addition is on the backside of it.
And they are eliminating some of their driveway in order to put that.
Surface.
Correct.
It's, actually, if you look at it, detail is really pretty straightforward.
Very much so, and the addition is all on piers, not on slab, so. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Um, under section twelve, C, A of the, uh, land use ordinance, uh, the application requested addition within the, uh, setback of the, um, shoreline zone, uh, and the application follows the, uh, ordinance and the allowed construction or addition square footage. So I think we should approve the, uh, application.
A second. Dick seconds, and all in favor? Thank you all.
Thanks, Mark. You could say longer.
Now, on this one, I didn't see an approval block. Okay, so that's all I need, okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Eric, come pick up the permit, or?
There'll be, there'll be, there'll be a fee involved in it of, uh...
Eighty thousand.
No, that's the fine cost.
I'm kidding.
Yeah, I, I'll, have him, you can have Eric call me tomorrow, and I'll tell him that he has had the bill and will be ready to pick up.
Do you want any of this? I have two copies if you want.
I'll take, I'll take them.
Okay, okay, I'll let you have that, and I'll keep.
Thank you.
So, oh, I'm being nosy. So why were you at selectmen, just for fun?
No, I'm sure I'm going to get you to, we put to bed last night. Get a little water weight, uh, warning.
Uh-huh.
We, we thought I said, well, we were writing an ordinance for a warning.
Oh.
At forty, forty.
He did this to us.
It is very, very.
I go to the table.
David.
No, no, no.
Said rightly, looks like what I need to process.
Trying to get significant.